All right, we are good to go. I think I figured it out. All right, Pat, good to go.
We're good. All right, so today's Wednesday, September 3, 2025, it's 6:32 in Heaven Corum. I'll call the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting to order, item one. And I'll just read this in real quickly. This is being held remotely in accordance to the provision of the open meeting law. The Zoom meeting is also being recorded. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely and shall address the questions through the Chair of the Board, or the host, who's Mr. O'Brien this evening. And the following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. I'm Patrick Riscu, the Chair, Mr. Stephen Geller, Mr. Tom Praddy, and Mr. Eric Costa. During this meeting, our votes will be roll call votes. The following Bridgewater Town staff are with us remotely this evening as well. Mr. Shane O'Brien, the Town Planner, and Mr. Stephen Solari, the Building Commissioner. Mr. Tansey's not with us, correct?
That is correct.
So at this time, everyone's mics are muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. As items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives' mics will be unmuted. If this project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask to use the chat feature to ask your name. Use the chat feature to ask your question by listening to your name, your address, and your question. The Chair of the Host will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the Raise My Hand feature in the Participant Menu, and you'll be unmuted when the Chair of the Host recognizes you. Again, please state your name and your address before asking a question. And if you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. So item two, this evening, we are supposed to have a joint public hearing. I'll open this up with the Community Economic Development Committee and the Town Council. I believe there were some posting issues on their end. We did get a memo from the council clerk that the town attorney had weighed in on the workshop, and we weren't allowed to hold the workshop, so that's why we didn't do one last week. The Council is not here with us this evening. And I believe there is a workshop scheduled for October 7, even though we were told one couldn't be scheduled, so I think there's some confusion around this. So I think we should probably continue this to our 9:17 meeting. And if we want to take a vote at that time, even though the CED may not, we could take a vote at that time. Does anybody have any comments or concerns or? Sorry, so Mr. Praddy make a motion to continue it to 9:7. Shane, I'm saying the right date, correct?
Yeah, yep.
9:17 at 6:30?
Yes.
So it's made by Mr. Praddy. Do we have a second? By Mr. Geller? All right, so I'll take the role. So Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Mr. McDonald's still not here, correct?
That's correct.
All right, item three. This is an A and R plan for Six Aldridge Road, map 20 lot 77. Is the applicant here, Mr. O'Brien?
Um, let me see. Just wanted to check anyone in the Participant Menu representing the applicant on this matter?
Shane, Hardy and Man Design Group PC is here.
Okay. Someone from Hardy in mind. Yep, we can hear you.
Uh, okay, my, um, for the record, my name is Chi Man, we're the Civil Engineer, working on behalf of our client. Um, we have great part of it, who is the PRS, who prepared the plans.
Sir, and I didn't hear your name. It's coming through very muffled. I can't understand what you're saying. Can anybody else? Is it my computer, Shane, or is it the applicant?
No, it's a little muffled.
Okay, I can repeat again?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, for the record, my name is Chi Man. From Hardy and Design Group, I'm the Civil Engineer. Um, represent our client to present this plan to the board. Um, basically, we are trying to craft out about 1.5 acres parcel A from number 18 Audger Row and combine that to the number six Audger Row. But the remaining of the number six Audger, uh, number 18 will have one acre of land to comply to the zoning requirement.
Are you able to share the plan on your screen?
Uh, yes, I can.
Yep, I have allowed sharing abilities, so you should be okay.
Sir, just I did get your first, your last name again, I'm sorry.
Uh, last name is Man, M A N.
M A N, okay.
Okay, this is the A and L plan show on the plan, number 18. Audger Row is where my cursor and the shaded area is parcel A, which is being crafted out from number 18, it's going to be combined with map 20 plus 77, I believe, which is the number six Audger Row. It's 1.57 acres of land to be transferred. So map 20 plus 77, number six Audger Row will have total 4.49 acres at the end. Most of the land that being transferred, probably half of it is wetland. We created more like a passageway to get back to the remaining land, the total land area for uh, map 2075 is one acre. Currently, nothing is being proposed to be built here. We just want to reserve the land. If there's any zoning change in the future, there's more land area for the number six for any future development. If there's ever, you know, anything proposed.
So, Mr. Man, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So what are you calling this new lot that is 18 Aldridge Road? Is it lot one? What is it? What is it? Is it labeled at all?
It's labeled parcel A.
Well, parcel A is the rear piece is cutting off. What is this new lot being called?
It's remained the same map 2070 plus 75.
Okay, but so one of our zoning ordinance says that you have to have 50% upland contiguous upland. So what percentage of the one acre does the wetlands represent?
I will have to do a calculation. I don't have.
So if you look at, if you look, if you look at our zoning section, 4.1.1.3, it says 50% of the, you know, so you don't differentiate the amount of uplands on each lot versus the amount of wetlands?
Okay.
And that section says that 50% has to be upland? So that would need to be figured out and added to the plan?
We can add that to the plan, but I'm pretty sure, I'm 100% sure we have more than 50% of them.
All right, so my next question is, is on the table of dimensional requirements, so the majority of this lot is residential A?
Yes.
And per dwelling unit, it's 43,500 square feet? This is a two-family dwelling, correct?
Yes.
So that would need two acres of land for this lot? If you look at the table, the table of dimensional requirements, you actually call it out in your plan, it's just area per dwelling unit, 43,560?
Yeah.
And if you look at, if you look at, so it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot? And section 5.9 says that you can't make a lot more non-conforming? Or the structure? So that, in my opinion, that would require two acres, and you'd need to identify 50% uplands, 50% wetlands. At least 50% uplands, I guess it doesn't matter how much wetlands.
Okay. We can definitely give you the number, the number, and add that to the, add that to the plan.
And I also think the lots under size, so we're creating zoning issues.
Well, we have reviewed that with the Building Inspector and also the Planner, and that never brought up to me that that would be an issue.
Okay, I think it's an issue.
So today, Pat, I kind of sent around a memo because typically we would have on our A and R plans some language regarding that the endorsement of the plan by the Board shouldn't constitute, shouldn't constitute an opinion to if the lots conform. Uh, that's a typical language that we would have placed on each plan. Um, because our endorsement's not really based around the zoning conformance. It's really so much the frontage. The frontage isn't changing.
This lot doesn't have that. I mean, I'm not comfortable signing this. It's creating, it's already a non-conforming lot with a non-conforming structure. And I just, to me, it doesn't meet land space requirements. It doesn't have the calculation for the upland. And it doesn't comply with 4.1.1.3 or 5.9 or the table of dimensional requirements, so.
Well, can we look to maybe continue this to the next meeting and then maybe the applicant can solve some of these concerns that you may have?
Well, we have 20 days, right?
Yep, and this was brought to the Clerk's Office last Friday. So we are, we have actually 21 days. So we are good until at least past our next meeting.
Any other board comments or questions? Uh, yeah, so Mr. Mann stated that he had conversations with planning and with development. Did he have conversations with the building?
Uh, yes.
With Mr. Solari?
I forgot the gentleman's name, but I did meet with the Building Inspector. And he brought me over to planning at that session that said, you know, it looks good to submit the plan.
Yeah, I sent some comments and an email just with some concerns of, you know, genuinely, you know, two-family. It's the mix of the zones in terms of the RCs and the RABs, because the RABs don't technically allow for duplexes to be in them. So, you know, we had to look under non-conforming uses for that. I think Pat does bring in a good point in terms of the zoning does say per dwelling unit, so in that case, it should look for conformance to what the zoning is. But what I can tell you is regarding this endorsement of the transfer of land property, it shouldn't be an issue in terms of endorsing. Um, but if the Board feels more comfortable with a plan that's more in line with the zoning, you know, we can certainly ask, we're within our timeframe to ask the applicant if they would like to kind of pursue that opportunity.
Well, I mean, we're not creating a new lot chain with adequate frontage. We're creating a parcel with no frontage, right?
Well, we're, it's, you're creating, it's a transfer from one lot to another.
Right, but then we're creating a not, we're creating a more non-conforming lot.
Sure.
And it's with a non-conforming structure on it. And I just, I would, I don't care what, I don't believe, I think we've made mistakes in the past. I don't like approving lot zone violations on them.
No, I get you. But like I said, we can at least have the conversation and give the applicant an opportunity to, at the next meeting, to either make some corrections or add some language to the plan.
Right, and I think that, well, I think the lot is grossly undersized. I think it needs to be two-acre lot.
Sure.
With 50% upland. Any other board comments?
So Pat, what you basically said in your dissertation there was that the zoning allows for existing non-conformings to be changed, but not to be more non-conforming. Is that correct?
Yes, I read it earlier today. Section 5.9 says that, and I think Mr. Solari said you can't make, you know, so it's already a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot.
Steve probably knows that one by heart. He deals with so many.
And we say in there that you need 23,500 square feet per dwelling unit, and it has more than that right now. It has over 2.5 acres. So there is some excess land, 0.5 acres, but if you go by the, if you go by the dimensional table, this is, it's abnormal because we don't have many two families in a one-family zone. But this, based on the table of dimensional requirements, this would require two acres of land, not one acre of land. And it would, and it would have to have the calculation of upland versus wetland.
Okay.
Because that's in section 4.1.1.3.
I think, I think talking to the applicant, we can see if these corrections can be made, because it seems that the intent of this is to just kind of create this lot or transfer this land with the assumption in the future that something different could happen, so I don't see it being an issue that it could be corrected from this.
Well, I mean, they have to add an acre to it, so.
Sure, I don't see that being impossible.
So, Mr. Mann, do you want us to vote on it, or do you want to ask for a continuance?
Oh, ask for a continuous, and we can come back with another plan with the calculations of the wetland versus upland, and also we can shift another acre of land to go with number 18.
Okay, what meeting would you like to go to, sir? The next meeting, the 17th?
17th.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go the 17th.
I'll make a motion to continue this to the meeting on the 17th of September.
So motion, Mr. Praddy, do you have a second?
I second that.
Mr. Costa, second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? I'll take the role, Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so this is continued until the 17th? Meetings at 6:30, so.
I'll make sure to resend you the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann.
Okay, so moving on, Shane, item four.
Sure thing. So we got a continuance request for 1010 Elm Street to the September 17th meeting. They went through, they went to conservation last Wednesday, which they're kind of doing some corrective action on some of the issues that are over there. There's still an enforcement order on the property that needs to be corrected, but they're progressing. They progressed through conservation. They jumped over a hurdle, so not sure if there's going to be one more continuance after the next meeting, but hopefully they can at least give us an idea of what, where they're heading at the 17th.
Okay, so thank you, Shane. All right, so we have a continuation request for the 17th on 1010 Elm Street, which is map 30 lot 20? And to 917?
Don't move.
All right, so Mr. Fabroski, did I see you join at some point? I can't see anybody. Are you here, sir?
Yep, we joined.
All right, good.
So we wish you a member tonight, so you'll be voting on this? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, so Mr. Fabroski?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. KJ, I apologize if you came on and I didn't include you on the last one. I.
That's all right. I had a problem getting on Zoom.
All right, item five, we have Zero Pleasant Street. This is Clamont Bridgewater Hotel 2 LLC. This is for a landscaping plan update, per site plan condition of approval. The decision was rendered on January 24, 2024. This was continued from the August 20th meeting. Mr. O'Brien, they asked for a continuance until October, is that correct?
That is correct. They requested a continuance on this matter to the October 15th meeting.
Somebody want to make a motion to continue this October, say that again, October 15th?
October 15th, correct.
I'll make that motion to continue this meeting for Zero Pleasant Street to October 15th meeting.
Okay, Mr. Praddy, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Geller? Second, any discussion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
The Fabroski?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Good, thank you. So, Mr. O'Brien, we have some other business. Do you want to give us an update on the Plymouth Street subdivision?
Sure, so originally, we sent out some notices to a butter's regarding a project, a proposal, I think it's 593 Plymouth Street. So that was noticed in the newspaper. At one point, we caught a a Scrivener's error. We put the wrong street on there too, so we had to rerun the ad. So the new corrected ad ran today. It's going to run next Wednesday, and that item will be on for the September 17th meeting, so newer butter, newer butter notifications, I believe, have been sent out. But that subdivision will be on for the next meeting. We've sent around some the plans to departments where we've gotten some interesting feedback, which I will forward along. There are already some concerns about the subdivision, but we'll wait till the applicant, you know, provides a presentation on that matter. But yeah, that'll be on for the 17th, but just wanted to let you guys know that it would not be on for tonight's meeting, or if anyone's here from the public that saw that first notice, that item will be placed on the September 17th meeting.
So, Mr. O'Brien, just, and I did, Mr. Praddy was on the board years ago, and I've been on the board probably for too long now. But I was just, I was thinking about how we used to handle projects, like, so when things come in, one of the checklist items, instead of all these projects, water and sewer is a concern in town now, and it always comes.
Sure.
So can we, do we have to change our rules and regulations? Or can we just simply add it to the checklist? Or can you handle it internally that before an application is accepted by us, they file a water and sewer impact report of pay the water, because it seems like when I talked to Mr. Tenero about projects and what's coming in, he says, well, they haven't even filed a water sewer impact form yet. So, and I'm not familiar with the process. I believe it's, there's a fee paid. They demonstrate gallons per day needed for the site, what type of use it's going to be. I mean, I think, I think that should be part of our preliminary work before an application is submitted. An applicant should know before they submit to us whether water is available, whether water and sewer is available, whether water and septic is available. And frankly, it's the applicant's fault for not going to meet with those departments first.
Uh, well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put all the burden on the applicant. I think.
I'm just saying, they need, we need, we need a process in place.
No, I completely, I completely agree. I would say that, you know, from a applicant standpoint, we do come off a little bit sometimes disjointed. However, I think there's opportunity to streamline the process. What I would hope is that maybe someday that water impact form application could be placed online, because from my understanding, it's a process where someone just gives us to check, or I have to reach through the water department. But yeah, if it's a process that we look to advance requiring water impact forms through either zoning or rules and regulations, I think there's, you know, opportunities to do so. I know through our last rules and regulations update, we did ask applicants to at least or having conversation with DPW is that applicants should pursue, you know, public wells, which some applicants have done that, rather than look to utilize existing water. But yeah, I think, I think we can develop at least an over-encompassing process to help people, you know, have a better understanding of how to, how things work. But I think the discussion of saying that there is no water, or there's no sewer for everyone is a a poor way of doing things when there's opportunities for us to kind of better explain our infrastructure situation.
And I, and I get it, I just, we used, and it changed before you were even here, so I'm not blaming you or anything. I'm just, we used to get, we actually used to get a copy, just thinking back and looking at old stuff.
Oh, I look at old stuff all the time.
We actually used to get a copy of, here's how many gallons a day this project's going to need, here's what it needs for sewer, here's what it needs for water. So I just, I don't know if we should change our rules and regs, and we can do that very easily at a public meeting. And just say for any project coming in, for every, any subdivision, before you, before your final submission to the Planning Board, you need to, you need to submit the water and sewer impact form and pay that fee, so it can be evaluated. We, you know, niche, was it niche?
I think niche, niche was on call a couple times.
It was Stan Tech, Stan Tech used to review it for the Water and Sewer Department and give us feedback. So that hasn't happened in a number of years, and I think that's that, you know, if we can try to, maybe you can talk to Mr. Tenero, or we could just add it to our rules and regs, or maybe it's already in there. I haven't, I haven't gone back.
I, I don't think it's in our rules and regulations regarding any requirements for water impact, but like you said, for older comments, I've, I've looked at older comments on projects, and you know, it's, it's interesting to see, you know, water not be as much of an issue as it been in, you know, current comments, so I've looked through past comments, and it is interesting how, you know, there was, there used to be more material or more kind of, you know, data-driven process in the past, but I'm happy if we would, we would progress back into that situation where, you know, applicants come in with, you know, a defined amount of gallons per day expected, and that we can provide applicants, you know, an idea of water pipe locations, or sewer pipe locations, or alternative opportunities rather than just say, well, no.
Yeah, we do, so actually, in our, in our subdivision rules and regs, item 17, we do require a water distribution impact statement.
Sure, but that's different than a water impact.
Right.
Whatever is, you know, because that, if, from my understanding, asking the last time, that's a $2,500 fee for someone to review the water on DPW's behalf. And I don't know how many applicants, before they get into the gate, want to pay $2,500 to be given idea of our water situation.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can, like you said.
I mean, just something to think about, because it seems to be a sticking point, so.
Sure.
If we can, if we can have, if we can have, get a copy of the water impact form that the DPW wants filled out, have it in the office, and the minute somebody starts talking to us about a project, say, fill this out, get this to them first, so you know where you stand with water and sewer. I think that's, that'd be, we can work that into the process somehow.
Sure thing. I can reach out to DPW and see where that impact form is.
All right. Site visit, the Lakeshore and Compass Health, let's go to it for Friday at noon time, Shane, right?
Friday, noon time, September 5. The agenda has been posted. The agenda kind of goes over the basic, you know, things. We don't discuss the project. The applicant can show us around. Welcome to the public. Public can't ask questions. We can't ask questions other than, well, discussion questions we can ask. Basic questions like, what's this on the plan? But I'll have, I'll have extra copies of the plans as well. The applicant's going to bring some extra copies. But yeah, it's going to be on Friday. Hopefully, weather looks nice, so park at Two Lakeshore Center, and then we'll walk over.
And just for the public that may be on for this, I believe Encompass and Clamont did allow for public participation onsite, is that correct?
I believe so.
Good.
It's just, it's basic safety precautions, so we're going on to private property. You know, I think we haven't had any real issues on some site visits with the general public, but keep it that way.
All right, next meeting, the 17th. It seems like we have a lot of stuff on.
Yeah, we got a lot of things pushed from that meeting to the 17th, as well as the Plymouth Street subdivision. I got a street acceptance request, but we may have to push that off until the meeting in October. But I'll forward that to you guys tomorrow, and Pat, you and I can, I guess, discuss if, you know, if it'd be too much for the 17th or Pat, you and I can, I guess, discuss if, you know, if it'd be too much for the seventeenth, or. Too long enough to wait for the fifteenth.
Okay.
Cause we, we don't have a meeting October first, just FYI.
All right, so, and I know we, we're talking about street acceptance, and I did have a question. That I, I told the um, a resident at desk, we, we were notified. Quite a while ago that the sidewalk and street layout um, changes would be made to Magnolia.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess it, they were notified it was starting on a Thursday, this was. Six, seven weeks ago, I think you were notified as well, correct?
Uh, six, seven weeks.
Well, maybe even before that, before you left, so.
Um, I got an as-built plan and a profile plan from Oldfield One, but.
Well, remember, remember all the work that was supposed to be done on the other subdivision, Magnolia?
Yeah, they did, they came in for the admin or the minor mod.
They were gonna cut out some areas and then move some areas?
Sure.
I guess people were notified, I think if you look probably back in your email, I think you and I talked about it, you were notified as well. That work never started and was never completed.
Okay.
So I don't know if we can follow up with Attorney Castaneda and just see if there's a timeline for that.
Sure, and like I said, you know, if we have a street acceptance with his name next to it, um. Coming up soon, like I said, I got, it's the accept, they're trying to re-accept uh, Oldfield Road, Timber Lane and Urbek Circle. Um, so. We can also bring that up as part of the discussion as well too, if he's uh, joining us.
Okay. And another thing, maybe we can meet with the town manager on. The Jenny Leonard Parkland that we designed to be accepted by the town, but then that. The opinion may have changed, I guess. So.
Sure.
If we can connect on that.
Sure, I can.
Because that, that, that will come up in that meeting.
Sure, I can forward along to Justin, we can have, we can bring him up to speed on the matter.
Okay. Okay, any board committee reports, Shane, for you, from your get?
Uh, from a board and committee report, um, I'm just in the process of, not really kind of board and committee, but i- it may be brought up soon, so. Um, in July, we finally got um, the grant accepted, I think through council, it wasn't a council issue, it was more of a state issue. Um, for an update to our open space and recreation plan. So, it was set to expire April of this year, but we got a um, a five-year extension. Um, we applied for the grant prior to that, so um, though our open space and recreation plan doesn't expire for a little bit. Um, we're gonna take the opportunity to update it. Um, so i- it's, you know, more in line with some of the recent trails and acquisitions of farmland, so. Um, hoping to put that out for RFP, uh, just gotta go through some procurement stuff uh, pretty soon. But um, that'll be pretty interesting, it'll be good to kind of follow up on some of the work that you guys did um, with the CPC. Uh, I know there was an open space portion that um, James Goldson um, did a good job on. Uh, so we're, we're looking to kind of tie in our open space plan that we did in twenty seventeen. To some of that recent work, and then kind of look for more opportunities to uh, have a plan, public meetings, um. As well as, um, I guess if we're on the. We're talking about public meetings, we do have a public meeting coming up on uh, Tuesday. September twenty-third to discuss uh, Route one oh four corridor study, it'll be in uh, council chambers. Um, as well as available via Zoom. Um, for that meeting, so um, we're just working on the flyer for that with OCPC. So, everyone is welcome to attend, as well as, you know. Attend via Zoom as well too. And then I guess in terms of planners' report, uh, as you can see, we are on Zoom again after you guys did a uh. Uh, it looks like a very good hybrid meeting prior to my time back. Um, so what I would like to kind of discuss, at least in the future, is that starting in. Back in October, um, we look to have at least one of our meetings be a Zoom. A month, and the other meeting be back in that hybrid format. So being that we have meetings first Monday, I mean, first Wednesday of the month, and third Wednesday of the month. That we look to have one of those meetings be hybrid, and then one of those be Zoom, um, the, the issue on my end. Was that. In terms of legal ads, I had to, I essentially have to send a legal ad three weeks in advance. And I wasn't kind of entirely sure what was gonna go on with the hybrid meeting, or if it was just a one thing. Uh, affair, um, so that's why the next meeting is gonna be Zoom, but happy to have a, a quick little discussion. With you guys, if that seems like a, an appropriate way forward.
Yeah, and you probably want that, and then you mentioned this to me, a certain meeting every month, so you can schedule appropriately, correct?
Yes, i- it would either be the first, we could, even getting it out there, we can let applicants know, we can let board members know. That this meeting's view, you know, first meeting Zoom. Third meeting, or the second meeting of the month is hybrid.
I mean, I mean, do you have a preference?
I, I honestly don't have a preference, I, like I said, if we're starting. October fifteenth, um, then we might as well just have the second meeting of the month be, um. You know, hybrid, cause then that leaves us with a hybrid meeting. November nineteenth, and then a hybrid meeting in December on the seventeenth.
Any board feedback on that, do we want?
I have Zoom at all anymore.
You don't, you don't want to Zoom at all?
I don't, I don't know why we would, you know, it's kind of a COVID thing, why, why would we continue on Zoom? I deal with a lot of other towns, and most everybody's going away from Zoom.
Well, it's not really, it's, it's not really a COVID thing, cause we're five years past COVID, it's more of an accessibility thing. Um, the hybrid model requires extra staffing to be there. Um, we can't, essentially, two oh one A, conference room two oh one A works from a hybrid format. But it doesn't work to have a lot of members of the public there, so you don't want to be in a crowded room with, you know. Thirty or forty residents, unless you do, that's completely fine, um, but in terms of accessibility. I- it's easier to manage from a singular perspective from Zoom. As well as recording the minutes, as well as recording the meeting and then placing on the YouTube. So, i- it's more accessibility than anything, it's not really. Health oriented or COVID, COVID oriented, it's just. Ease, ease of staffing, so once a month, I can. Drag IT into the situation, you know, council's a little different because BTV helps them. Um, but as you see with other boards and committees, I know other towns are different because their. You know, situation's a little more set up, I've worked in other communities during COVID, the situation's a little bit easier to have hybrid meetings, but. Um, you know, from talking to IT and looking at how we kind of. Would do that. It it requires a person, you know, behind the scenes, not in this, like the Wizard of Oz, manning something. And from a staffing perspective, making sure that I'm able to give you guys proper information while talking. Writing down meeting minutes, recording the minutes, making sure that I'm able to communicate everything around too, so.
So I, I, I understand where Mr. Fabroski's coming from, I'd like to go back as much as we can and press him, but. Why don't we start with the third, the second meeting of every month for now, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I think it's a good way to ease into it, and. Question, Shane.
Sure.
For the full live meetings, must we also have um. BTV or whoever, a Zoom po, with it?
I would, I would say that my understand, our understanding of the governor's orders is that. You need to have at least some sort of hybrid format as part of it too, um. Yes.
Every meeting, okay.
Because all of our, honestly, all our meetings have, are recorded on YouTube, I think the town has done a good job. You know, since twenty twenty to have all our meetings available on YouTube. Um, you know, BTV is essentially a volunteer corp, volunteer organization, so they can't attend. Every open space committee, every whatever, so, you know, the platform Zoom has been, you know, uh, you know. Fine in terms of its utilization with YouTube, you know, after this meeting, you know, from my end, from a technical standpoint, after this meeting ends, I get an email. Of the video recording of the meeting, I send it to IT, they place it on YouTube, so it's, it's a very quick format, whereas. I- it, it's more so integrated with it, as well as the uptick in public participation utilizing Zoom. Um, has been a, an opportunity for those who may not be able to get to meetings all the time. Um. To participate, you know, whether it be a butters and all that too, so we've kind of seen that too.
Okay, all right, so. Any other comments on that?
Yeah, well, I guess my only comment would be that we'd be starting October, this, the, the one meeting in October. Um, October fifteenth, um, back to this uh, kind of. Format.
Then that would mean the first one would be just Zoom, second one would be hybrid on every month, correct?
That is correct, we just don't have a meeting, the first meeting in October, so we'd have Zoom meeting, the next meeting on the seventeenth, and then hybrid. Um, that one meeting in October.
Okay. All right, um. Shane, do you have anything else?
Nope, all good on my end, unless you guys have anything for me, I'm back, um.
I'll just give a CPC update, so, um. We're still, I mean, Carlton's on as well, I, I, I think that. We're working on a number of things, so the Hanson's Farm is wrapped up. Um. The multi-purpose fields, I think the application is complete, um. Hopefully that'll be in for the next meeting, those are the fields behind the, the um. The old high school, the middle school, the Edward O'Donoghue School, it's got three different names now, so, um, wherever, you, you're familiar. With that area. Um, and I think there's the window project has begun at the um. There's a three hundred thousand dollar window project going on at the, at the um. Senior housing off of Main Street. Um, so a lot of good stuff happening, and I think Styles and Hot Park, we got an update on. This last meeting, I believe, um, there's some work that stopped, but. Hopefully, uh, we'll resume soon, so. Um, but, uh, you know, I know other people are here, and usually. I didn't, it's not on the agenda, public comment tonight, um, because usually we have. The public hearings, and there's plenty of opportunities for people to, to talk. Um, so, if there's anyone from the public here that wants to say anything or add anything, or get an update on anything that was on the agenda. As far as when it's been continued to. Um. Feel free to raise your hand, or i- identify yourself to Shane and.
Uh, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I, I missed.
Right, Mrs. Hanson.
Hi, I missed, um, I see you guys are gonna be busy on the seventeenth, um, but I missed what Shane said about Route one oh four. What, what is that discussion, and when is it again?
Sure. Oh, no, it's, I'm working with OCPC to get a flyer together, um, I just have to iron it with um. Um, the transportation planner, um, but it's gonna be um. From a hybrid format, uh, September twenty-third, um, it'll be a, a public meeting on uh. At, I believe, six, six thirty, um, that day, um, just to discuss, um, OCPC does. Um, these traffic studies around the one oh four corridor, so it'll extend out from, you know. Pleasant Street all the way to downtown, and all the way to through. Um, town, just to talk about, you know, traffic issues, intersection improvements, bicycle improvements. Uh, just general improvements in that area, and how um, how traffic issues can be, you know, fixed.
So, September twenty-third at six or six thirty, would?
Yeah, I'll get the flyer out, it'll be, it'll, we'll put it on the Facebook, I just, I think we're just ironing out the time.
Oh, it'll be on Facebook?
Uh, yeah, I'll be on our Facebook page, and I can work with the town manager's office to have it on the uh, main page as well too.
Okay, and uh, you, it'll be in Academy Building.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, is there anybody else from the public?
Uh, yeah, uh, this is Mark Peterson from uh, Church Street.
Glad to be back.
Uh, I have a question about, um, you mentioned the YouTube videos for the, for the meetings, do you guys keep a spreadsheet of something? That has the list of all the, um, all the old YouTube videos and their dates, and the, the meeting that there is, um, they were for?
Uh, no, it would just be on YouTube, you'd have to go through playlists, I don't, I don't think the, there's any integration with the YouTube videos in a spreadsheet.
And IT, you don't know if IT might have one?
Uh, you'd have to talk to IT, uh, if they, what spreadsheets they have or not, um. From my perspective, or, or we just utilize it through YouTube and YouTube playlists.
Sure.
All right.
Do you have anything else, Shane?
No, all good.
Okay, any board comments?
None here.
Mr. Slary, you good with us?
All good.
All right. All right, so item seven, adjournment, do a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Mr. Geller?
Second, Mr. Praddy.
Mr. Praddy? Take the roll. Mr. Fabroski?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
All right. Night, everyone.
Night, night.